...this little bit tonight come on. And that we have this resolution and they have to take care of. And I asked the President, Senator Gable, if I were made to come and explain this whole thing. Well, you got the board.
Since January 1st, 1997, under the State Public Health Law, any agency providing emergency medical services must have a medical director. It requires a quality assurance program, and the quality assurance program, many must include a medical director. Also, the agency and several other places other than that specific provision of Article 30, but within Article 30, there are several other cases where it mentions a medical director and what a medical director should do. Since, I believe, since the inception, Dr. Russell Hartung at the emergency department of CBPH has been serving as the medical director for just about all of the agencies in the county. He's recently received a promotion and he is determined that he is not going to be able to fight a hospital, doesn't want him to, to serve as a medical director for the remainder of the agencies. I believe he's only going to be leading EMS of CBPH and EMTs of CBPH and the Flint County Dispatches, which will have to be have a medical director because they develop medical devices at that point. This determination is probably going to be as early as the 1st of October. We've been looking for the possibility of who to get for a medical director. Dr. Beach has been serving as a medical director for Morrisonville and a couple of other agencies, and he has taken on a good chunk of the county, but he said, he said, no more, he's had enough. Champlain EMS and Rosas Point Fire Department were left without, without a medical director as of the 1st of October. Dr. Southwick, John Southwick of Champlain, has agreed, in fact, he volunteered to serve as a medical director for both of these agencies. We, I talked to him this afternoon, he's volunteering his services to do this, it's without reiteration. The only requirement he has had is that he be specifically named as a medical director for the Rosas Point Fire Department so that he can be covered as a medical director under our insurance. It's, the whole thing is going to be contingent upon his acceptance as a medical director by the Regional Medical Advisory Committee, and they won't be, sometime in October, but the current director of the Regional Medical Advisory Committee has stated that he will, in the interim, cover this as far as necessity of having a medical director because we can't operate from the island. So, I think that's about where it is.
Any questions, Board? We have to pass a resolution today.
I do. How much longer do you think, Walter, we'll be able to keep our system going the way we are?
It all depends on how many volunteers we get. If we keep getting volunteers, we can go on for a while. I know we have two firefighters at the current time that are interested in taking the basic emergency medical technician level this, this fall. And they, if they complete that, that will give us, I don't know, increase our number by about 20 percent. Because right now, we're working, we have, I believe that's, if everybody's here and everybody responds, we have six basics and three, three advanced, one is support and EMTs. We have a couple of school and they can't respond for one reason or the other. So, right now, we're working, and one, the state of New York, just drew out the approval policy for them to be able to take a test, so we're temporarily without the services in one of our agencies. Right now, we're operating with three day, basically, three basics and three advanced. So, a little, a little touch and go, we've had some days when there was nobody available and we had to get new orders.
I mean, down the road, it looks like to me, five or 10 years down the road, that this would be the same thing as, as everywhere else, it's all to be paid. You agree with that?
Like I said, it depends on volunteers. If we get people that want to step up to the plate and do it, we'll continue. If we don't, then we, we won't be able to do it.
Like, do?
A lot, a lot depends on, on who, who steps up and says, okay, I'll volunteer to do it. And what's a real, it's a real amount, a large amount of work. The, so the amount of training and the time and everything else has to be involved, it takes a long time. So, it's a, it's a, it's a, I couldn't, myself, I couldn't make it until I retired. I didn't feel like to make it until I retired. So, yeah, it's, it's going to be a while. We've got, some of the EMTs now are, are taking it as part of their college course, so that they get college credit for what they course. So, they're, at least at the basics, they're, they're a point back. In fact, we've got three, three of our, the members that we started at age 16 or 17, when, when they went on to college, became EMTs in college, and now are able to service whenever they're available for, during the breaks or whatever.
We're extremely fortunate in the village to have people that respond voluntarily for EMS right now, because if we didn't, we would be having a charge. So, extremely fortunate.
If we don't, if, if we don't make people to step up to the plate, yeah, we actually are going to have to either find some way, there are ways by which the animals could be separated in some respect from the fire department and still run by, but under a different umbrella, and there could be charges. And then you can hire personnel, those kind of things can happen through a contract with another agency. I mean, there's all kinds of reasons, of what you could do in the future if you couldn't get the volunteers.
It looks like the hospital is just getting bigger, just expanding the area a little.
Well, a lot of agencies that have been responding, and they did have a lot of people, that found it more and more difficult. One of the latest ones was Shazie, but then Shazie just had seven more EMTs in that district. So, you know, it's, the problem is that they're able to respond at the basic level, but they've only got one track. So, yeah, they can't guarantee if they have such a score.
Guaranteed. Any other questions, Board? Carol, you read that resolution?
I certainly will. Whereas Dr. Russell Hartung, who is presently the medical director for the Rosas Point Fire Department, has received a promotion at CBPH and will not be able to fulfill his duties as the medical director of the majority of EMS squads in Clinton County. And whereas Dr. John Southwick has agreed to be the medical director for Champlain EMS and the Rosas Point Fire Department. And whereas Doctors John Southwick will stay in his capacity during the interim or finding another qualified director. And whereas John V. Southwick, M.D., has accepted and, be accepted and appointed by the Village of Rosas Point as the medical director for the Rosas Point Fire Department to perform the functions of the emergency medical service, medical director pursuant to the provisions of Article 30, Emergency Medical Services of the Public Health Law of the State of New York. This res, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rosas Point does hereby accept Dr. John Southwick as the interim medical director for the Rosas Point Fire Department. And this resolution shall take effect immediately. No question of the foregoing, and unanimously approved by...
I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. This rule called Move Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign. That is done. Now, I'll open the floor to anybody else who wants to talk.
I'd just like to comment on that. Carol, can we send a letter to Dr. John on thinking of volunteering services, please?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think a suggestion that might include a copy of that resolution with it, so that that'll also, that also states what teams are.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you, Walter.
Anybody else wish to request a vote, they do so at this time. If not, oh, go ahead. Where?
I'd really like to re-miss, I wanted to do this a couple of months ago, then I missed the meeting. As someone who knows about March 2009, I am marked on what ended up being about a 15-month course of becoming an advanced support emergency medical technician. And I wanted to say right now and thank some individuals without whose help I would have been a lot more contented. My language here. Anyway, I would really like to thank the chief of the fire department, Mike LeBlanc, and the mayor, George Rivers, and all of the staff involved that made sure that my reimbursements were timely and that transportation was paid a little, two days, 15 months, a lot easier.
Walter, no thanks necessary, we need to thank you. And that's, I know what you went through because of other people that have done it, and it's a tough grind, and it's a hell, you know, a lot to go through, sir, for it. Thank you for your for-...
Yeah, for people over there.
Gave me a ride one night to the hospital. All right, I have a chance at the end of the meeting to address the board. Minutes of the previous two meetings, August 2nd and August 9th, Board, if you have copies of both sets, is there any additional deletions?
Make the motion that we accept the minutes that I've written.
Second. Moved by trustee Oo Roberts. Seconded by, by which one of you two? Oh, Jefferson, thank you. All those in favor, vote, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual side of aye. That's what I get for the aye. All right, bills, you have copies along the bills, is there any additions or deletions?
I have one addition. Melissa McManus for $3,640.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as amended tonight.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Roberts. Is there any discussion, Board? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
The only item I have is a, I received from the American Legion Montgomery Post 912, an application for an alteration of notice form for permission to make alterations for the establishment, and I'm just presenting that to the board. There's no action to be taken, and it came in certified, so.
Information, all right. All right. Report, is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Report of the mayor and the Board of Trustees, and the first thing on my agenda is a discussion on the National League of Cities. I brought this up, I brought this up last meeting, and we held it off to this meeting. I don't know if you got all the information, but this is the letter I received from them. I don't know if you've got copies of it or not. It said, "Congratulations to the Village of Rosas Point for winning first place in the 2010 local government official award in public works category. On behalf of the officers and members of the National League of Cities, I am delighted that the underground utility project was recognized by the State, by New York State's Conference of Mayors. Contributions to the underground utility project deserve special recognition for encouraging and development of similar programs and promoting and enhancing the voluntary life in cities across the country. The National League of Cities also recognizes programs like yours for this prestigious award for municipal excellence. Your program exhibits the type of innovation that should be submitted for this award. I strongly encourage you to apply. The deadline for 2010 award has passed, but we'll be sending you information about the program in the future. Again, on behalf of leadership of the National League of Cities, I want to extend our congratulations to all who have contributed to earning the local government, use the word, the Village of Rosas Point, assigned by the executive director." Again, I believe, they sent us a little certificate, but I believe we should join this, it gives us $400 and something dollars a year, but it gives us national recognitions throughout the whole United States. And again, I think anything that we could do to get recognized like that, we should...
Can we take the money out of your budget?
I don't care where you get it. Our son isn't here, can we pass it? We'll put the heat on him.
So, I'll make that motion, that we join the National League of Cities membership? Is that form of motion?
To be. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of benefit will we get other, with, other than recognition. I mean, you have an icon that we can rely on for a go-to person.
Annual leadership summit, right? Congress of Cities, and these are all the different things you do, pre-conference leadership training, congressional city conference, these are all stuff at the national level. These are some of the things they do.
Are there funds available for...
They'd probably take it out of my budget. Our son likes doing that. Pardon?
You can try for a year if you don't like being in.
Yeah, it's a, it's a yearly dude, right?
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll go with that, we'll do one year. I'll be your favorite one year if we don't get any benefits.
It's for renewing, sir.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Roberts. Is there any discussion, Board? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Now, each one of you have a paper to fill out.
You didn't tell me.
Each one of you have a paper to fill out. And I got one for Hockrow.
We can do his.
One for our son. All righty. Second thing on the agenda, discussion cutting trees at the Learning Center. I received a call last week from Bob Morgan, asking us to cut three trees on the Learning Centering property. And I told him I would get back to him, and after talking it over, I don't think we should. It's on private property, and if we go on private property, we're opening up Pandora's Box, because the people next door want a tree cut, and somebody else wants a tree badly.
Do you have permission to...
Oh, yeah, you certainly do.
My name's Ann Ledoux, I'm the president and board directors of the Learning Center. This is Becky Tulliam, she's the director. We initially wanted to ask the village for a couple of different reasons. First, it's very close to the, to the property line, I think, that divides the, the children's center and the village. I was walking on the sidewalk in front of there just last week when I left for a meeting, and there's a lot of dead branches that are overhanging on the sidewalk area. I don't know what kind of liability that is for the village.
No, we, if there are dead branches hanging over sidewalk, we would probably trim those branches.
And somebody might, you know, somebody might want to just take a walk on that sidewalk, just to look at that.
Because of that.
Right. Now, the other thing that I, we wanted to address was, you know, the Children's Learning Center is a not-for-profit agency. They're, they're not-for-profit, they provide daycare for this community, not only for the businesses that, you know, the support of the village with the taxes, but probably for some village employees as well. Because we're a not-for-profit, obviously, there's not a lot of money available. There is also, what we hope to gain from this is kind of a partnership. We have a partnership now with some of the businesses in the community. They, you know, they donate, they, they let their employees serve on the board, they, they do a lot for the center, and we hope to draw in more of the businesses in the political end of the area as well. And we're, we're hoping that the, the village could see this more as a partnership in helping the not, a not-for-profit that is in the village, that supports the village. We try to do a lot for the community, you know, when funds dictate, and there is, because, again, for a not-for-profit, there's always, there's always that money issue, you know, to go out and hire somebody to do this. It's going to take money out of our...
I fully understand where you're coming from, and it's, it's, it's not personal, but we have certain guidelines.
I'm not taking it personally.
No, but I mean, it's not personal with the board.
No, I realize that.
It's guidelines that we have with the state comptroller's office, right? And when you do certain things, and they come in and audit you, audit you, all hell breaks loose.
And I understand, totally understand when it comes to private, private houses and people that, if Joe gets it, Paul wants it, et cetera, you know? But this is a not-for-profit, it's not like it's a, it's a home that's a privately home, a privately owned home. It's a not-for-profit agency, and does, does the comptroller's regulations apply for, to not-for-profits?
I'd like to run it by the attorney, you know, have her name, see what he says.
Oh, yes. They, with the question answer, yes.
Yes, what?
They, they scrutinize minutes on the board, right? They scrutinize the books, they scrutinize the library books, right? Everything that we do, they can come in and do the fire department books, and anything they see now becomes a big issue with them, and will be plastered in the paper, Rosas Point did this.
Rosas Point helps the Children's Learning Center. I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, but you ain't going to see it that way.
It won't be that way.
You won't see it that way.
We can turn it around now. We know how to raise it.
We've already done things for you people. And we paid for all your lights in there. We, we chased all the lighting in that place, and we paid for you. I mean, you had to put it in, but we bought all the lights.
Yeah.
I'm definitely in favor of helping your neighbor without a doubt, but I think we just need to make sure that it's, it's, it's okay to do it. And I think Brian, you make a great suggestion, if we get the okay from somebody.
The biggest thing I'm worried about is like everything else is liability, you know? We don't want to be sued personally on the village board for a decision that we made that was against the advice of an attorney. I mean, if you pay for it and you don't take its advice, so. We're not sure now, we just run everything by either the engineer or the village attorney.
It may like the old days.
Trust me, I know, I know.
I'm sure you're sure.
I worked, I worked, I worked on the border for a private company, and I know about regulations, believe me.
But just saying, you know, it's, it's gotten to the point, it's almost impossible to do business in this state.
I know. Getting near impossible to do anything.
Yeah, it, you know, I went up and looked at the trees, I said, oh my God. I could see, you know, that light truck sitting up there, and someone say, hey, what are you doing?
They're, they're very, very large, and we did have a branch come down on a car. Thankfully, there wasn't a kid there at the time, because that's, I think, our biggest fear. And, you know, again, if we had a lot of money, this, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We'd just do it.
Trustee Hockrow's not here, and he don't like cotton trees.
What caused the trees to...
They're, they're, they're old.
Just old.
Yeah, they're really big, maybe somebody's got a lot of plant there, you know?
So, is this organized?
I bet that they're over 100 years old.
Yeah.
Probably are, yeah.
Yeah.
They're sugar maple, big ones.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, I record it by them. But there is some stuff hanging down along the sidewalk.
Well, if there is, we can trim that.
Yeah, there are, and, and that's, I'm just mentioning that, I think, I was kind of hoping that it would convince you to cut them, but as an alternative, you might just want to check for your own liability, because, you know, I walked there and I looked up and, you know, they're hanging, the dead, the dead branches were hanging on our property, and it hit a, an employee's car.
Superintendent said he had no power cut, and the board said yes.
And I was going to volunteer some people to help out if I don't want, but...
But we, you know, we got a set of rules we have to follow.
Now, is that...
It's not, sometimes, it's not pleasant.
So, is that, is that a final thing, or are you going to check with someone?
We'll call the attorney tomorrow.
Because, you know, you brought up something that I wanted to ask, you said the fire department. So, if the fire department wanted this done, the village wouldn't be able to help them either, or is that a...
Pardon?
You said something like the fire department...
The fire department belongs to the village. I can tell you right now.
Okay, so it's not, it's not the same?
The fire department belongs to them, it's a department of the village.
Okay. All right. Do you want another department? A child care...
But if the legion, if the legion were to ask, we'd, we'd tell them the same.
Yeah, okay, that's a better example, I guess, the legion.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, you know, I can say...
Like I say, sometimes it's not pleasant, you don't like telling people, no.
No, I realize that, and, you know, some of this, like I said, was really trying to get that partnership going, because they are...
Well, I think we're pretty, pretty good partners. We do what we can do.
Yeah, and we try to return that, we try to give back to the community too, and we try to do, we just had a little thing for the community, you know, someone looked at it as a fundraiser, but believe me, it was not a fundraiser, because we didn't make any money. It was just a chance for the community to get together on the property and, you know, have a little carnival and enjoy the, enjoy what the center has to offer. So, you know, if you could find out and let us know.
I certainly, certainly will.
I know Bob Morgan called you, but if you want to call him back, if you want to call the center directly and, and talk to Becky.
Not a problem.
So, if we get the release from the attorney, do we want to say that we couldn't go ahead?
Yeah, we can, yeah, the other thing, the other thing is, call the conference of mayors. Call that conference and...
And we'll have the...
John, okay, is his name? John Gallo, the attorney for the conference of mayors, he's pretty, pretty up on stuff.
Okay.
We'll get back to you with an answer, how's that?
Wonderful.
We're not saying it's completely no yet.
Okay, well, at least you're considering it, because that is what we were hoping we could hear.
All righty. Next thing on my agenda is Melissa's request. She sent this today after our meeting with her, right? And you'll have a copy of this, Board? Because you may not have a copy of it, but mind is the essence here, because some of these grants run out, and some of the work has to be done by the end, not the work, but the paperwork's had to be done by the end of the month. And the first one is, if you, you read that, but...
I did.
Carol, did we copy the board on this?
I thought we did.
I thought we did.
Dennis has one, he must, it's probably still down there, Brian.
Oh, okay.
It's probably out there.
Yeah, this was issued today.
Oh, yeah.
I want early this morning, but this is probably...
She checked with Andy Algruzzo from DOS on the Main Street, Streetscape Purchase, benches, bike racks, and all that that we had done at Grant. And he would give, this would give the village plenty of state grant money to hire a planner to do what we wanted to do with that code review. But we just got to tell her to go ahead. You guys really need to read this, and, and really should... Carol, can you make two copies? He's got one, he's got one. See if you can screw up that machine now. Well, you got it?
I mean, we pretty much talked about this after...
Yeah, we talked about it, and she, you know, she did her homework on it, and some of these, you know...
We agreed on it anyways. Right. Yeah, right.
Yeah, but it, you know, she said that, this is just that she has contacted, but...
Same thing with the marketing, we agreed with that.
Yeah. And that $30,000 that we got from Senator Little's office, we received in 2007 as a memoratum for the purchase and development of that dock down there. She said the village could recover approximately $16,000, split it by the two parcels, and if the board is interested, they would, the leftover money perhaps is feasible for cost analysis for the future work, the board might want to be considered that site. You know, because we said you was a lady dormant.
Oh, yes.
There is money there. Hey, Sid, give us money, spend it, because you're able to keep much, much for longer. It gets, it gets to the governor, he'll veto it. I don't know how many line items. So, I don't know.
Don't you want to re, pick that revitalization committee one again?
Yes, and they talked to some other, some individuals that were on it, and they definitely want to get it going, so.
I think we should just give her the, okay, we've already agreed to it.
I agree.
Okay.
I'll make a motion then that we allow Melissa to go ahead with already...
Whatever we get rid of on last, whatever it was last Friday.
We don't go for it, we won't get the money, so, so. I'll put that form of the motion. Allow Melissa to go ahead with their suggestions on one, two, four different items on the revitalization project, or review.
Second that. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Roberts. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote on the usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And I believe that's it for me. Trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. I just have one item that's not on the agenda, I just want to mention that we had approximately 2,000 people come to the village last week, I biked, ride from Queensbury all the way back to St. John's, Quebec, and I was riding to the village office on my bike, and a couple of people said, boy, what a beautiful village this is. It went over real good, we talked to the director, and they said, please keep us on your list for coming back to the village, hopefully next year, a year after, and stuff like that. And they were very impressed with the staff here, and everything went good, and it was a good, positive process for the village, so, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Baker. I have nothing to like. Oh, I'd like to, trustee Baker.
We'll see if you like me.
Trustee Roberts.
I have one item on my agenda tonight, and that's to discuss the library roof grant. This is for replacing the slate roof on the library. Donna Boehmell, the library director, has organized a grant request, but it needs to be put in to get finalized or cooked. but it needs to be put in to get finalized or go to the next step by the end of August. So, we need to make a decision whether we want to go forward with replacing that slate roof or not. Right now, the estimated cost is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we would have to pay about half of that. If I, if I'm misspeaking, please correct me, but... So, we're going to have to make a decision whether you want to replace that slate roof on that, on that library or not. Personally, I think we need to protect our, our assets out there. You know, they did mix some required repairs in the fall of 2009, if I understand.
Yes.
But I, I was looking at the photos that the contractor had taken, and it's probably recommending that the full roof be replaced and...
With the grant money, does it have to be slate, though?
The, according, according to historic preservation, it has to be slate or slate-like. And I got estimates for both, to use two different contractors. And one contractor just gave me the estimate for slate, and the other contractor, slate-like and slate. There was hardly any difference between the two. It's hardly the estimate.
There's probably a difference in longevity, though.
Yes, there is. Slate has longer life in the story, according to the contractors.
That's what the contract, the architect said about the rear roof station, because we wanted to put that slate like. She said, you want a thirty-year roof, or do you want a hundred-year roof? And the cost is minimal between the two.
And if I can add to this, I'm also working on, I'm going to do...